There's a lot of issues going on with the Indian Nation application with the Bureau of Indian Affairs for that rest and we've reached out to them on your behalf, on the county's behalf.
And thank you very much for both letters to the Bureau of Indian Affairs.
And we plan to continue to do so as necessary. We have an ongoing issue, has been for a decade or more at this point, since 2006 I think is when their application first went into the Bureau of Indian Affairs and for them to make a speed decision like this I think is a concern for everybody in this room. So we plan to continue our outreach the congressman does and I was interested in being a partner with everybody in this room to find a resolution. In any other matters, obviously there's a lot going on here in the county. I'm here to learn more about what you guys are working this evening. I do try to stay apprised, but please don't ever hesitate to reach out to us too. We have a lot of counties in our districts. They're all equally important, I like to say, but we'd like to stay involved and know what's going on, know how we can be a resource. And sometimes there's other ways that we could be a resource that maybe you don't even know locally, so we're going to try to make sure that we're continuing our outreach to all the localities so we can do what we can to help. So please don't ever hesitate to contact us. We have an office over in Geneva. I work on a corner most of the time, but I am all over the districts. I'm from the Finger Lakes region, like Griffin Forum, so this part has my heart, but I'm not supposed to say that. So thank you all for welcoming me this evening and I am looking forward to hearing more updates. Thank you.
Thank you, Allison. Does anybody have any questions for her before she slides up?
I'm always answering questions if anybody has anything.
I would just like to mention one thing.
Sure.
We have a serious problem with finding employees. There's not enough emphasis put on workforce development. I understand, and this is secondhand, I got it from the now president of GULS Union, that they had two courses at GWLSK, 10 to 12 guys in a course, and he accepted one. GULS had two courses, 10 to 12, and of course, they accepted one. So out of 48, they found two people that they would hire?
It was the program that you're referring to, it's with Finger Lakes Community College. My understanding is that almost all those individuals are employed at the locations and they were trained. If not, they've been able to find employment elsewhere in the community. I've come to the graduations here for this program. I've also gone to the ones for GWLSK. And usually on the day that I go, they're telling me that the majority, usually there's one or two that might not have a job yet, but those, they're usually employed after their training. So if there is additional information, I'm happy to connect with people, but my understanding is most of those people aren't finding employment here locally.
Well, I still think there's an issue. Supervisor Croninweather, did you have a question?
Yes. For several years, we've been pushing for legislation to protect the white deer that are free ranging outside of the depot to keep the gene pool in Seneca County viable in case there's disease or something that kills the white deer inside the depot. I have a resolution in front of the Fish and Wildlife Advisory Committee. If there's anything Mr. Reed can do to protect the white deer, free ranging white deer in Seneca County, there's several other states do it, and it's a blossoming tourism entity in Seneca County.
They're doing sewers now too, right? Yeah, all the tourists are, I haven't thought of them yet, but I look forward to doing that.
I have a letter here from the seventh and eighth graders from South Seneca School. I took 100 of them on tour, Walt Gable, our top county store, and I, they had a ball, they made B hotels, and in between, we take 25 at a time on tour. And the letter here says, "It was a memorable experience and it sparked their interest in the white deer and the depots." We can protect the free ranging ones because they jump over the fence.
I will tell you, so Tom has, actually, Tom used to come to our MDCO as a child. His dad was a veteran, so they had the privilege of being able to go on the depot with his mother, actually, when he was a child. So he's been around, very aware of the issue, and is very interested in doing whatever we can.
The DEC, the Wildlife Biologist for the DEC that sits on the Fish and Wildlife Advisory Committee, their stance is, "They're just another deer and there's way too many."
Really?
But, you know, there's not too many white deer. And Seneca County has the least number of harvested deer during hunting season of all of central and western New York. So it's not like Seneca County is overrun with them like St. Louis County or Southern County. So if you can have them lead the charge for that, I appreciate it.
Yeah.
All the other assemblymen and center family, also, they've all had a package that I put together to explain everything.
Yeah, I'll, 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 I'll connect with you after the meeting and we'll make sure we continue this conversation and figure out what we can do as an office supervisor.
Great, thank you.
Anybody else?
Thank you, Allison.
Thank you.
Next, I'll call on Rich Rinkie. Rich, Rich is our, the Seneca County representative to the Western OTB. Rich, I see you handing out some literature here.
Yeah.
Welcome.
Thank you. On a quick note, and another note, the UCE formally, the organization formally dissolved. The enthusiasm is still there. The reason for our, we dissolved is because we were partners with in O'Leary County, they had given up hope. So in our last two meetings, real quick, people are saying, "We're still going to keep in touch." All of you people receive all kinds of praise because you're the only people really doing anything in all of New York State to protect, to protect the landowners. And for that, you deserve a great deal of thank yous all over. And again, they were thanking you people, every one of them. Just let that be known, that we know you're still doing it and we're still there, but we're not a formal group. So with that being said...
Rich?
Yep?
I just want to mention that despite this board is concerned, a few years ago, when you were a member of it, you're the one that educated most of us on the Puget Indian Nation as far as the land in the trust and, and the land claim at that time. So thank you for all your work when you were on this board.
Thank you. Basically, I'm just going to pass this out tonight, and already they told me, I've got to be quick because I have a tendency to talk too long. The deal is, is all I wanted to tell you, the important one is, in August, you'll all be getting invitations to come up to Batavia and see what we own here in Seneca County. For those of you, and I know that there's three new people here, we're one of the 17 municipalities that own Batavia off-track betting. We got, we got involved in this in 1974, the county did, for something like $90,000 or somewhere, about $8,000. And the following year, I think in '75, that money was paid back in only $300 and some odd dollars in interest. Since that time, western region off-track betting has given the county upwards to $3 billion. Now, on the sheet, you'll see that the larger municipalities get a heck of a lot more than we do because it goes by population. But we're still, we're, in fact, we're the only casino, seven years ago, it was, Peter thought we were going to make it off. Seven years ago, we were wondering what was going to happen. Since that time, hotels gone up, we've been catering parties, the gaming is up. In fact, when I called yesterday to find out how they did for, with Saratoga, it was the third highest handle ever. So people are still coming out. There's been many parties and I would love to have you all come again. If there's anything in the report, I can kind of outline everything for you. And periodically, I'll, I'll come back and report to you and I'll let you know where the party is. That's the important thing.
Thank you, Rick.
Well, you could have spoken a little.
Okay, the next matter of business is the open privilege of the floor. I'll call on Kyle Blatt. Kyle, do you want to give us a little update on how you folks are doing over there?
Absolutely. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairperson. What I handed out is our neighbor notes that if you are within the radius of landfill, get it. We also obviously give it to everybody here at the county and distribute it to the towns as well to let everybody know what the plan is for this year now that Mother Nature finally seems to cooperate and give us break from winter to summer. But we'll take it, so we'll absolutely take it. So first and foremost, we had our mulch day this past Saturday. We were, we successfully delivered mulch to over 350 Seneca County residents to beautify their homes, which obviously this time of year is a great thing to do with, to keep the upkeep and keep the beauty of the Finger Lakes flowing. Our upcoming construction projects for this year, now here's not a sign of his way. So our upcoming construction projects this year, we had 12 acres of liner we'll be constructing, adding on to the 13 or so acres we constructed last year. We've got about 53 acres of intermediate and final cover. As the eastern hill is getting to gray, we're, we're putting clay on the outsides and then going to get some grass on that. We've got 50 additional vertical wells. Those are little circles drawn in here where we drill down into the waste and put basically similar to a well that you extract water from, and we extract landfill gas to send it over to our high BTU plant and our landfill gas energy plant. We're currently extracting north of 13,000 SCF of gas a day, which is enough to power almost 20,000 homes in, in the area. And also takes, the high BTU plant is taking north of 50,000 barrels of oil out of the, out of the system as well. So that renewable energy is coming out of this landfill gas construction. We're putting in, with that, there's an additional, over 10,000 feet of landfill gas collectors and headers, that's a myriad of pipes to get that, that gas over to our renewable energy, renewable energy production partner. We're also putting up another 2 million gallon beach eight storage tank next to the other 2 million gallon tanks or 2.2 million gallon tanks that we have over at the beach eight management facility. We'll also be bringing some additional beach eight treatment online a little later this year that we'll be, we're pursuing with the DEC. The order control is ongoing, so as we start placing waste in this new cell, we'll be putting litter feds up in the, along the western and continuing our order control lines. Speaking of order control, our, this is our rolling 12-month order chart. So we're looking at, on the far left, you're looking at March 17, over April 18. Obviously, we had a lot of order complaints as we were finishing up our, our order construction and the capping projects, and we're seeing a nice downward trend to, last month, we only had seven order complaints, which is the lowest month we've had in probably two and a half years. So the investment that we've, that we undertook when I came to this board two years ago, basically, we accomplished, you know, we had some issues and we had to take care of them. We feel we've come a long ways in that short period of time to make that happen, and it is to keep that going. So that's kind of where we're at with things. Last but not least on the back, open house, July 29th. We'd like to invite any of the board members and families to come. Going to have tours of landfill, tours of energy facilities, tours of, of the Falcons, all the, all the other things that we do over there. So we invite as many people come in behind the order post walls as possible to see what goes on over there. Appreciate the time for the update.
Thank you. Thank you, Kyle. Are there any questions from the supervisors? Supervisor Kaiser?
Yeah, thanks Kyle for the, for the update. I'm just curious, the gas, how is that extracted through those wells? Does it have to be forced up, sucked up, or does it rise naturally? Just curious.
It actually, if we didn't put a vacuum on it, so across the road, we have four, over in our energy facilities over here, we have 450 horsepower blowers, big reversible fans hooked up to two 30-inch headers that go out, that come all the way across the road, and we actually put vacuum on all that to extract the gas. If we didn't have that extraction, then the gas would push out, so.
So I'm presuming the more gas you can suck out of there, less odor?
And the more we get over across the road and make the dual layers.
What kind of oil are you getting out of there?
What kind of oil? I don't get heavy oil. Well, no, so basically, the high BTU plant, they use a, they use a comparison to oil. So they're, they're basically making 3,000 SCF of pipe line quality gas that's going into Menard Run Lines, it goes up to the Old Dominion Line, it goes up, you know, these particles here, this electricity goes out onto the grid over behind GULS, you know, this electricity is powering this area. You know, I tell the story back in the, I guess it was the mid-'90s, remember we had the big roll-in blackouts? We never went out of power here because the plant, our energy plant was putting power on. So even though they sell the particle, the particle's on the open market, they're here, they're powering the homes around here. That's, that's where a lot of it's coming from.
Supervisor Davidson, on your two big out of tank, this is a double line situation.
Yep.
So they're welding that up, putting it up like that?
Yep, it's double line, so there's containment, so if the inner tank were to fail, we got the outer tank. Everything we do is double locally. We live in New York State, New York State requires double liners, double pipe systems within the landfill, so there's redundancy in everything we do that if the primary were to fail, we got the secondary before it would get to, would get outside of it.
Where does this go after you get a new tank?
Well, about two-thirds of it, we're, we're running through our RO, Rochem treatment system. The other third, we're trucking off the various public wastewater treatment lines. But we're in the process of coming up with another treatment chain to partner up with our Rochem system so we can basically treat all our beach eight out of sight to have ground, to have stormwater quality material to be able to discharge off-site and all the contaminated stuff stays on site.
Many else? Thank you, Colonel.
Thanks for the time.
Are there any members of the public that would like to say anything to the board tonight? No? Dan, come forward and state your name and where you live, please.
Hi, Roberta and Charlie Austin. We're Austin's Collectibles and Antiques. We worked here last month for you guys and we live in Waterloo. And we have a store down at Travers Village down there.
In Romulus.
In Romulus.
And we tried to sue the visitor center down there, and we have gotten, I'm not sure how exactly it is, do we get, but we're on different places. Our team won't get signed up and we have to hurry and buy it.
We went to a few, like Kaiser, and then there was a couple others. But it's really, I mean, if I was a visitor of this place, there really is no place besides some of the wineries that you go into, they have some pamphlets. I myself, my husband and I, we would like to see, to work with, to have a visitor center there at Travers Village, to have a hands-on with the people because they ask for where, where places are, what things to see, where to eat, what to do. Their place needs a boosting around that area and...
We're trying to do it.
Trying to help out and we're just the two of us and we need to know where to go, how to do it, and what to do.
But we got to keep, get it going, you know.
And I don't know if this is the right place to go to or whether we need to go somewhere else.
Margaret, did their information get passed on to the chair?
It actually did. I sent it directly to...
I'll double check on it and see what status they have.
Okay. It's really hard for us to do the email things because even to take it off for the email...
We only got phones.
Yeah, it's only on our phones, so it's really more difficult for us with that.
I'll ask them to send a representative down to talk to you personally.
That would be wonderful. We're there Friday and Saturday for sure right now, but we plan on being more there as the...
We're trying to do a little like a small coffee shop, but every down the front, a bit of gear, stuff, probably go to bathroom, and they'll know where, you know.
Exactly.
And, you know, I said, though, the problem is, like, from Epcot to the long stretch to, they close to Rocksteady Lot, that's the main area they go up to Rocksteady, close to the container over, whether you're shopping. I try and make it more convenient for them to just stop and visit, go on, or see what they want to see in the room. It's a beautiful spot down there, by the lake and all that.
And I was just curious, the link that I sent, provided, did you have any luck with it?
Not really, no. I couldn't open it up.
Oh, okay. There's an entity, and I would have to open it myself to remember the details of it. We haven't done it in a couple of years, but they offer all kinds of literature to Finger Lakes, tourist information. And we used to go and collect this, bring it back to town hall, we had kiosks loaded with these different things. And I think they were, would cost like a couple hundred dollars, I think. But, yeah, that would be a good idea to have that there. Route 89 is the main thoroughfare from north to south along the lake, and we miss those tourists if they don't somehow, we catch them somehow, whether you know what they're calling.
They from south to north, they're coming in.
What did I say?
North to south.
How old?
Well, they come both ways, they do.
They come all over, yeah.
We have people come from different parts of country, like Santa Lucia down through there looking for stuff to do, and we have people from pursue come down, or China, different places, they're trying to find how to do it. We're not sure where to pass them on to, because we don't go, we don't go to wineries and all that ourselves, but we don't have time to do that. Yeah, hopefully they will, but not right now. And I didn't know so many people, so we could say, "Hey, try this place out for now, they'll give a benefit or something, help them out." It's a burden.
Thank you for coming in again.
Thank you for listening to us.
I will do some double checking and we'll have somebody get back to you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else tonight? Okay, moving on. Approval of meeting minutes for the April 10th, 2018 Board Meeting. Have a motion.
Motion.
Thank you. Any additions or corrections? And no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed. Next, reports of standing committees. Supervisor McGreevy, Health and Human Services.
Thank you, Chairman. From the Health and Human Services Committee met on Tuesday, 24th, in a number of issues. First, the committee authorized refilling a position for a full-time employment and training counselor in workforce development and youth bureau and backfill and vacancies due promotion for that position. Secondly, authorized refilling a position for a full-time site, we have a social worker position in the mental health department, and we also refer to legislation to reclassify a mental health clinical therapist position, senior mental health clinical therapist in order, growing demands for mental health school based services in Senate County. Next, we appointed Don Schutzer to the Finger Lakes Workforce Investment Board, July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2019. And lastly, we discussed a contract with the New York State Department of Health for the medical enforcement grant in the amount of $27,294 period of April 1, 2018, in March to December 19. This grant allows the county reimbursement for enforcement activities, education, suspension actions. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you, Ryan. Next, I'll call on Supervisor Davidson, Human Resources and Government Operations.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We met on Tuesday, April 24th, and we talked about one of the main things we talked about, the committee referred to resolutions for tonight to adopt a policy regarding an emergency response plan in the event of cardiac arrest occurs on county property and the use of an automatic external facilitator. And is there going to be training for that and is there going to be placed around, will it be available on the island? Thank you.
Thank you, Lee. Next, Supervisor Kaiser, Economic Development and Tourism.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have one item on tonight's agenda for the board to act on. In our major, in our main contract for the 318 sewer project, we allowed for additive items to be added as, if they came up at our discretion, mainly for increased sewer services for economic development. And tonight, we would like the board to approve one regarding a new potential need to use or new business on the project. So that's going to be coming before the board tonight, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Dave. And under your tourism, what, you tried to help these folks with some site to gather information from?
Yes, I, yes I did, Mr. Chairman. Like I said, the town of Romulus has had a kiosk at our town hall for a number of years. We discontinued it a couple of years ago. Minimal cost, this entity supplies quite a bit of information to be handed out with the whole thing from the whole Finger Lakes region. Good asset, I'm sure Mr. Jeff Shipley in the chamber, I'm sure is familiar with it, so hopefully he'll be a good help to them.
I know they tested an electronic kiosk at Del Loco, and I think they are trying to move forward with distributing more of those throughout the county. So maybe that'll be a possibility down the road here. Very good, thank you. Supervisor Heisen, Indian Affairs, you have anything, Bob?
Yes, I wasn't at the meeting because I was hung up in traffic on the freeway at that meeting, but I would like to say that I'd like to thank Congressman Reed, Senator Schumer, and Kirsten Gillibrand for sending letters to us to the Bureau of Indian Affairs on our behalf. And I see you have a long speech you want to make, so I will better repeat all that.
Well, it's not real long.
You can read this, but Paul will make the comments about the last meeting.
Okay.
You ran the meeting, Paul.
Yeah, I didn't get any on, but we have a agenda tonight to send a letter to our representatives to, or an extension to 120 days to review the application for land in the trust. I think it's, after eight years, they give it 30 days to respond, if we're trying to go a little more back to review the environmental effects.
Very good, thank you. Supervisor Brenau, Public Safety and Criminal Justice.
Contract with NMS Criminal Laboratories, Forsything Laboratories, and disposal of surplus equipment in the Sheriff's Department.
Thank you, Ernie. Okay, Paul, back to Supervisor Croninweather, Agriculture and Environmental Affairs.
I don't have anything other than the fact that we got a letter from the teachers that were involved in the students going through the Seneca White Deer Park.
They enjoyed themselves.
Thanking us for a wonderful time that the children will remember for a long time.
Were you the lead guide for that tour?
Walt, Walt and I were on the bus. I would point out the game and he would describe the histories.
Tag team?
Yeah, yeah. Usually I have to do both, but it was easy for me. Kids were real good. They got pictures, class pictures inside the eagles. We saw white deer, brown deer, turkeys, bald eagles, weasels. Fun was that, by all.
Thank you. Next, Supervisor Trump, Public Works.
The only thing I have outside of resolutions that will follow are going to be one of the resolutions. I'm going to ask for it to be tabled, and there's a supervisor reclassified position for senior water and sewer district operator position to water and sewer district maintainer. You may have some new candidates that are going to be required to meet himself.
Oh, that's, that's good, that's positive.
It is.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Reynolds, Ways and Means.
Thank you, Chairman. Ways and Means met on the 24th of April, and we discussed four or five things. First one was the fact of mandatory direct deposit. Second one we discussed was to, oh, discuss the, giving the money to the Seneca County Fair for, it's in the budget. The third is... Third thing was budget guidelines for Mr. Shepherd and Paul for seeing our budget for this coming year. We discussed a tax auction. And the fifth thing we discussed was on civil litigation against Maryland, Maryland Sheriff. And that was all except for sessions, so we handled that.
Very good. That tax auction, you did very, very well. Can you reason that that was up so much this year?
It was advertised well. I think we brought a lot of players in. We used a different auction, we used an auction company this year. We used Nick with an racer, I think, or laughing. We went out and hired somebody to do it and they went out the whole big problem. We had 200 people here, 200 bidders. We had 200 bidders here and a lot of players and.
Now, the fees for the man that came in to the auction, that was paid by the sellers?
Paid by the purchasers.
The purchasers, yeah.
Yeah, he's buy that, do that, do the, what I, so much percentage on top. So we're worried about.
So it didn't cost us any?
It didn't cost us a penny.
Good.
Yeah, it worked out really good.
Thank you.
A lot of people playing and sold a lot of property for pretty good money, so.
Very good, thank you. Excuse me? Okay. No, very good. Just has to be at the right place. Next, reports of special committees. Supervisor Trout, anything with the IDA?
Oh, yeah. Quite a bit.
Hey, Bob.
May 3rd. The sale of IDA-owned lands at the Dapo to Deer Haven Park LLC is finally closed. So someone has possession of ID. Sale of Summit Milk and Waterloo to Deep Dairy Products LLC is closed, as is the IDA effect, which that went along with. A loan to Pine Tree Farms, supporting Pine Tree Farms, interlakened close, supporting their expansion and continued operation. An economic development strategic plan was approved and will get started to complement the One Sonica effort. A presentation we made of the VOS in the near future, input from supervisors will be solicited. And last is a request for a press release soliciting interest for the open position on the IDA. So I would ask Martin to put that out.
I'm glad to see that they're moving forward more with the One Sonica information again. That kind of went by the wayside here for a couple of months, but it's good to get going on that again.
They're back on now.
Very good. Is there any other reports of special committees? Paul, do you have anything under soil and water?
No.
No? Anybody else? Chairman's remarks. I do have a few remarks tonight, and it's very appropriate that we have our representative from Congressman Reeves' office here tonight. I want to thank our federal representatives, Senator Chuck Schumer, Senator Kristen Gilbrand, and Congressman Tom Reed for again sending letters to the Bureau of Indian Affairs in support of Sonica County. As you all are aware, the Kiuga Indian Nation applied to the Bureau of Indian Affairs back in 2005 to take more than 129 acres of Sonica and Kiuga County land into trust on the tribe's behalf, thus removing the land from our tax rolls forever. The Department of the Interior acknowledged that the Kiuga Indian Tribe wants the land into trust for gaming purposes. That's a hot topic that we haven't discussed a lot. Sonica County, along with our neighbors in Kiuga County, have vigorously opposed this application since it was first submitted. We continue to do this to this day. Senator Schumer may have described this saga the best when he said for years, this application to take land into trust has hung like a dark cloud over Kiuga and Sonica Counties. I fully agree with the Senate Minority Leader and hope that brighter skies are on the horizon. Our residents and taxpayers certainly deserve some relief. Tonight, our board is tasked with once again responding to this ill-conceived application. It is simply unconscionable to think that the Bureau of Indian Affairs would choose to ignore the many shortcomings in the Kiuga Indian Tribe's land into trust application. But just in case, our county has asked for a reasonable extension to address the litany of errors in the document. For starters, the environmental impact statement being used by the Kiukas is now 12 years old and nearly old enough to drive. Surely, this document would need to be updated. Also, the state's gaming landscape has dramatically changed since the original application was filed by the Kiukas seeking their own gaming interest. The addition of more Indian casinos and four private casinos negotiated by Governor Cuomo has, at the very least, created a new competitive challenges for all those in that area. Perhaps most troubling is that unilateral action by the BIA would significantly harm our state and local residents, especially our school districts, the biggest beneficiary of gaming revenues. They would be disadvantaged. Taxpayers would certainly be disadvantaged as the CIN has repeatedly refused to pay all property and use taxes, only paying for those which are part of the application pending the income. And surely, they would not pay any gaming revenues. These are just some of the many challenges facing our local government with regards to this issue. Given the significant negative ramifications of placing land into federal trust, it is critically important that we all work together to find a method to eliminate this potential threat and hold harmless our local taxpayers. Thank you for your attention. Next, county managers' remarks.
Chairman, one more time.
Supervisor Heisen.
I just read an article in the Auburn Citizen that Pam Helmy sent a letter to the Bureau of Indian Affairs opposing this land into claim application. And I think we should get a letter, find out, get that letter from her.
Very good. I was not aware of that.
Probably right now also.
Thank you. Thank you.
She did that yesterday.
County managers' remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'll be brief. Before your supervisors, you'll see a draft copy of the tuition assistant plan. And I hope to get that formalized through committee on the 22nd and placed by June for the upcoming fall semester. Don't forget about the SAM grant list. We talked about this in last session, and the towns can play as well. So we need, that the equipment is a viable need for SAM grants, as long as it has a useful life of exceeding 10 years. I will issue, I hope to get it today, but definitely by the end of the weekend, by tomorrow, compliance plan committees. I'm going to populate a compliance plan committee to make suggestions, formalize an existing compliance plan for this county, and that's proceeding as well. Raise the age. I did join with the consortium of 10 counties, at least in intent and concept. The next step would be a commitment of 15 grand. And so I'm away from that yet, I'll bring a recommendation to the standing committees on the 22nd, and that's a worthy expenditure.
Thank you, John. County attorneys' remarks, Frank.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Just to add a little detail to what was going on last week relative to the BIA demand for commentary, our attorneys at Von Schorn and King did receive communication or at least a phone call with people at the BIA late last week. Although they were assured that an extension would be coming, it was Mr. Wadadio's recommendation, and I agreed with him that nonetheless, we should not assume anything. The result is that Von Schorn and King did file a commentary, or at least slightly reduced commentary, at least hitting all the high points last Friday, with the expectation that they'll be able to provide a more detailed list of comments at a later date with that extension in time. Needless to say, those comments focus on the stale environmental impact statement that the BIA is threatening to use at this point, and hopefully it will have some impact along with these very welcome comments that we're getting from our congressional and state representatives. So of course, I want to add my appreciation to our representatives for that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I want to also mention Supervisor Heisen, you brought up Senator Helmy. Also, Harris Beach wrote, I thought, an excellent letter on behalf of Kiwi County and the towns in Kiwi County for the same. Frank, I know we got a copy of that, and I was very impressed with that, too. Okay, moving on. Margaret, Communications.
Communications 74 through 91 were received and filed. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
74 was about the auctions. And the total was $565,400. That's.
Good night.
Yeah, that was good job.
If I could point out, Mr. Chairman, it was last year, and not to take anything away from Mr. Sinpropi, Pam has the job along with his staff this year. Last year, we first instituted the use of this auction program, and we have found it to be very, very valuable. And I believe that those figures do in fact represent a substantial increase over what we would have gotten using the old-fashioned method that we have been using previous years. So it is very encouraging to this group.
Good, then we had better properties, too. Okay. Supervisor Reynolds, number 14.
Supervisor adopt mandatory direct deposit for annual employee compensation.
Or? Motion made and supported. Any, any comments? Being no further comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. Pass with that? No.
Supervisor Heisen voting aye.
Yes. Number 15, Supervisor Reynolds.
Supervisor Director of Finance to pay 2018 funding to Psychical County Cultural Society Incorporated for the 2018 county fair.
Motion made and supported. Any discussion? Being no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed. Number 16, stay with Supervisor Reynolds.
Supervisor adopt budget guidelines for 2019.
Or? Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Being no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed. Number 17, Supervisor Trout.
Seeker resolution designated in 2018.
Is there support?
Support.
Thank you. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Being no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed. Number 18, Supervisor Trout.
Seeker resolution determination of environmental significance.
Or? Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Being no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed. Number 19.
Sonica County receives $1.327 million for bridge maintenance.
Or? Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Well, we certainly appreciate that amount, but the comptroller last year pointed out that Sonica County had the largest percentage of structurally deficient bridges. Isn't that right, Sam?
That's what I heard.
I would have, I would have thought maybe he could find a little extra money, since he at least pointed us out. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed. Number 20.
Requesting to table reclassified position for senior water and sewer district operator to water and sewer maintainer.
And you're requesting to table that?
Chairman, you got to put it before the board first. You have to put it through the board, and then it has to be seconded, then a motion to table.
What if it's not seconded?
Then it dies.
So we can do it and nobody's seconding, and we all go down and have it tabled.
If the intention is to table it, then it remains under old business before the board. If it is not seconded, it is not before the board anymore.
If the intention is that. If you like, right back, like just now, let it die, it's not gonna.
So, reclassified position for senior water and sewer district operator to water and sewer maintainer.
Or? Motion made and seconded. Discussion?
The motion, yeah, I won't stutter the next thing. Motion to table.
Now, if you want to make a motion to table it, now would be the time. Thank you. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion?
May I just add, Mr. Chairman, again, I want to be sure we understand, again, there was some confusion about this in the past, where motion to table is, in most cases, what is meant here is a motion to postpone. It does not return it to committee. That's a different motion. So what will happen now is if this motion is passed, this will appear under old business at the June meeting.
Okay. I don't think we have a problem with that. Don, you?
No.
Okay, and you're just going to refine the motion somewhat. So, any other discussion? Being no further discussion, all in favor of tabling this, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, number 20 is tables. Number 21, Supervisor Trout.
Board supervisors award bid for preferred trade contractor.
Or? Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Being no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed. Number 22.
Supervisor authorize budget transfer for contingency bonus to buildings and grounds expenses.
Or? Motion made and seconded. Any discussion?
Yeah, what is that?
Supervisor Lorenzetti.
I'm sorry, I can't recall. So this is over at the News Center, the Health and Senior Services Building?
I'll call on the county manager, John Yuen, who would explain.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, ma'am, the, what was not appropriated or expected were, were not significant, well, tens of thousands of significance, of failing heat pumps and a evaporator of the HSS. What has gotten through those repairs have been transfers, intrud department transfers to accomplish those repairs. What has become evident is the facility's budget, the operational budget will not make it till the end of the year without a supplement from, in this case, contingency. And I would remind, I would remind everyone that the rent far exceeds, the rent of the existing tenants far exceeds these expenditures.
And the rent goes into the general fund?
Yes, sir.
So it doesn't necessarily go back to the facility to be used. Any other discussion? Being no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed. Number 23.
Staffing in office equipment and furniture surplus and authorized auction for disposal.
Or? Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Being no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed. Number 24.
Set bids for multiple bridge painting and repair in 3756.02.
What, what, is this multiple bridges or just?
Eight bridges.
Sam's?
Eight bridges.
Eight bridges?
Yes.
Well, I guess that's part of the structural deficiency.
Might bring us out of the cellar. Might test.
I think it's going to take a little more than just painting. Any other discussion? Being no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed. Number 25.
Board supervisors approve changes in water rates for Senate County Water District
Board of Supervisors approve changes in water rates for Seneca County Water District Number 1.
Is there a second? Support. Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Was this the purpose of the meeting prior to this board meeting tonight?
Yep.
Being no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
In the opinion of the chair, this motion is passed. Number 26. Supervisor Brownout.
Dispose of surplus equipment from Sheriff's Department.
Support. Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Being no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed. Number 27, Supervisor Brownout.
Contract with NMS Grand Laboratory to provide for Seneca Laboratory services.
Support. Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Being no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed. Number 28, Supervisor Brownout.
Board of Supervisors court the centralized hours arrangement claim.
Support. Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Being no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed. Number 29, Supervisor Heisen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Renewal of Kiuga Indian Nation application for land into trust. I read it, but it's too long.
Support.
This is very similar to the one we passed many moons ago.
Right.
Just updated. Is that correct, county attorney?
Unfortunately, but it addresses the current issue.
Okay. Any other discussion? Being no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed. Number 30, Supervisor Kaiser.
Authorize added bid item 10, Seneca County 318 corridor sewer improvement project. Contract number 1A, general construction.
Support. Motion made and seconded, any discussion? This was an item that was in the bid, and at the time, we decided not to move forward with it, and afterwards, it was changed.
Part of the original bid allowed for items to be added if they came up at our discretion, and this is one of them that fits the criteria when it will bring another customer in for economic development.
Very good. Did we get all that, Joe? Anything to add? Thank you. Being no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed. 31, Supervisor Davidson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Adopt the policy for automatic internal distributor emergency response.
Support. Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Wow, this is a three-page document. Being no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed. Supervisor McGreevy, number 32.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Reclassified position for mental health clinic therapist to senior mental health clinical therapist.
Support. Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Being no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed. Number 33.
Number 33, Finger Lakes Workforce Investment Board Appointment.
Support. Motion made and seconded, any discussion? John Yuen? Being no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, John, for your service there, awesome. Number 34, Supervisor McGreevy.
Number 34, Contract with the New York State Department of Health for the Tobacco Reform Grant.
Support. Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Being no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed. Unfinished business, do we have any unfinished business to bring forward tonight? Okay, we'll move on. New business? Somebody is asking for Rule 29? Supervisor Lorenzetti? Oh, you have new business?
Yes, I have new business, but I think a few of us got a call the other day from one of our supervisor keep cabasse.
Yes, that matter has been taken care of.
Okay. Can anyone report, do they have an account there?
No. No, they stopped for directions.
They were at the pump line, is what I heard.
Well.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure that it got taken care of.
That vehicle won't be there anymore.
I would hope not.
Okay, somebody looking for Rule 29? I'm not sure who is this is. Excuse me? Okay. Well, let's bring it up first. Somebody want to ask for Rule 29?
I will do so.
Thank you, Supervisor Kaiser. Motion made and seconded for the purpose of discussing a matter that has not come before the committee. I'll call on the county manager to fill in the details.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In the 21 days, well, I'm thinking state, this is federally actually, but Senator Ork now has put forward a Senate Bill 8210, which essentially increases the federal support for a veteran service agency and officer of 300%, right? So here we are, recognizing the necessity of at the county level, providing services for veterans. We get little to no subsidies to do so, largely that in county. Here's a map for someone else to help recognize that need. And I certainly recommend that we join in recognizing the need as well, and supporting Senate Bill 8210.
Thank you, John. Any further discussion? You know? We had a motion for Rule 29 that was passed.
Had a motion to bring this rule forward to Rule 29, it was seconded, and that's your voting.
Okay. Well, just clarification here. Being no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed.
So now someone needs to move the resolution.
I will move the resolution. I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Being no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now we have, now we're going to need another Rule 29. You want to make the motion? And second it, you want to describe it? Wait a minute, let's vote on the Rule 29 first.
I will second.
Over here, Supervisor Trout. Supervisor Reynolds made the motion for the Rule 29. Supervisor Trout seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that's passed. Do you want to discuss this?
You can do that, really. Thank you. As described in vacancy today and maybe new information for reporting totals, our existing veteran service officer, Mr. Dan Conners, has submitted a resignation effective June 21. That leaves us without a veteran service officer, which is an obligation of the state for us to provide those services. There is a succession plan in play, but the best method of seeing that succession plan through is for our current employee, Ms. Susan Smith, to attend veteran service officer training, which happens to be in green, according to our travel policies. Policy in Oregon. That takes this board of supervisors' approval to accomplish a state trial and training.
Are there any questions or discussion?
I wish they had it at a better place. Yeah, this is a bad place.
We didn't. On the 29th, Supervisor Reynolds brought it up after the fact.
I want to move the resolution.
Supervisor Reynolds, would you like to move this motion?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All right. Being no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed. Being no further business unless there is something to come before this board, I will entertain a motion for the special order of the day.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?